Oh, good. Everybody in the room, first one of everyone go to the bathroom, and I said, okay, she got back, everybody in the room go to the bathroom.
Dental floss.
And I realized that she had to be teaching.
Hello.
I called Mr. Kipman.
I ate an apple on the way down.
You don't begin there.
Was that the last time you teach?
I have floss.
I'm working on it. I got a piece of.
It only took like five minutes.
Welcome to our last council meeting of 2021. If you would like to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're honored to have Bishop Gearing here, our invocation from Zion World Ministries. Welcome, Bishop.
Mr. Mayor, Council, let us pray. Our Lord and our God, we are imperfect people, but we serve our perfect God. You not choose the leaders of this great city and our law enforcement because they're perfect, but you chose them because they have a good heart. For man looks at the outer appearance, but God looks at the heart of a man. Thank you for our mayor, who is doing a great job, followed in the footsteps of a great mayor, and we thank you so much for Mayor Grant and our city council. We thank you, God, for our city manager, and I know oftentimes we don't tell you thank you enough. We thank you for our city manager, one of the youngest of our leaders. Thank you for his integrity of also bringing forth to us and choosing a great man to become the chief of police in the person of Chief Mayor Phil. Thank you for our city police department, and we're very mindful of the words of our former chief, Chief Mitchell, "Let us serve with heart." Thank you for this great city. Thank you for the great citizens. And as we close out this year, God, we give you all the praise for Canton, Georgia being one of the number one greatest cities in the state of Georgia. Continue to give our mayor wisdom, to give him knowledge, protect our first responders, and to protect our children and our senior citizens. We give you all the praise as we close out this year and say thank you for keeping us all safe. In Jesus's name, amen.
Call our December 16th meeting to order. Nice to see everyone looking so festive tonight. We'll have a consideration to approve the agenda. We have some additions or changes. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor, we need to request to add an old business item F, which would be discussion and possible action on waiving the 12-month application period for case master plan amendment 2109-002, and then a request to add new business item B, which is a discussion and possible action to accept donation of land from Mr. Bill Kent.
Those are two separate?
Yes, sir.
F and G, so.
Motion to approve with the aforementioned.
Oops. Sorry. Schmidt?
I wanted to talk about tabling item in old business B, case MPA 2105-004 and CUP 2105-005.
So B and NC in old business. Okay. Did we receive a request from the applicant to table those items?
Correct.
Okay, so you want to table them now and take them off the agenda? Okay. Is that a motion? Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any other changes or additions? Any motions amended?
Yes, the motions you approve as amended.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Everyone voted for the motion. This time we'll move into guests and visitors, and we do have a special presentation this evening to honor Councilman Estes in his last council meeting ever, 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 ever. That's why he's smiling tonight, so we're all a bit envious, but we want to thank him for his service and to our city over the past four years. Nick has been a great addition to our council, he's worked very hard for our citizens. I know he's personally talked me off a few clips over the years, especially a couple of years ago, over a few issues and items. Nick, we appreciate your hard work, your dedication, your sense of humor, and everything you've done for the city and contributed to the city. I think if you could step down, I think there's a special presentation for you. If you step down and join your family, I think we have a little something for you.
One of the things we like to do when our elected officials leave office is give them a rocking chair that has the city's logo on it and also has the dates of service and your name, and so this is for you, and we appreciate your service to the city of Canton.
I'll address the audience.
You want to come up here and do, or you want to do it on there?
Thank you. Yeah, so thank you, that will go very well in our hosts, and there'll be a lot of good moments, I have the perfect place for it, so thank you very much. I just wanted to say a couple of things, and really a little over four years ago, you know, I was just a small business owner that fell in love with our city. You know, the time we had a council that I felt was a bit old school, I said they wanted to be progressive, but when challenged, I learned it was all talk. We had many on the council that weren't as open-minded, and at the time, I had a lot of thoughts that I wanted to bring to the city, but it wasn't clear how to move forward. Then I met Bill and Sandy. Bill and Sandy helped me to navigate the bureaucracy. I was so grateful to them, and with the community behind me, I presented an ordinance change to the council, and it was approved, so I'd figured it out. But a week later, the mayor vetoed it. This was my first formal interaction. As a fun fact, the mayor had only vetoed three items in his 12 years, two of them were from me. But I tell you this story only because that was really what was at the heart of my decision to be on the council. I always swore that I would be the unpolitical politician. I swore that I would always represent my constituents. I wanted to be a voice for the citizens. I knew it wasn't always going to be easy, but, you know, I promised to always make sure that I listen to people and put the best comments and decisions forward. I'm really very proud of what our council has accomplished over the last few years. Under Bill and Billy's leadership, we have committed to listen and represent the people that have elected us. While there are many accomplishments, the one that I feel has the greatest impact today and on our future is our roadmap for success. One of my favorite quotes is from Lewis Carroll. He said, "If you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there." It's too easy to approach things randomly or be seen as subjective in our decisions, but our roadmap is that guide for decisions and has set forth clear guidelines for the community to hold us accountable. It is a work in process, but I am proud to be part of the council that created this clarity and worked to listen to the needs of our citizens. There are a few groups that I wanted to thank. First, the staff, and we really are so blessed to have a staff that is so dedicated and committed to supporting our city. They really truly put Canton first. I've had so many opportunities to work with many on the staff. Mr. Patton, I've always had a presence at every meeting, and I thank you for your experience and helping us help ourselves to make the right decisions on development. And Dave, since I was the head of the Infrastructure Committee, meant that I got to learn a lot more about water and, of course, sewer than I ever thought I'd want. And I did know that, learned that you have a crappy job, but you do it so well. You only hear about infrastructure when it fails, and you definitely do a great job of staying ahead of everything, and for that, I appreciate it. I wanted to thank our chief and really the entire police department. You know, the level of dedication and passion that all of our officers bring truly is a benchmark and a model for success. When I started, I had the pleasure of working with Lou Stewart. She was my first city clerk. I would always tell her that she was my favorite city clerk, and she would remind me that I was her only city clerk. But now, Annie, you're my favorite city clerk. You know, I thank you for all your support. You keep me in line, I'm not the best at multitasking, and you would always give me gentle reminders, so I thank you for that. And Nathan, you are my favorite assistant city manager. So I do thank you for just all your attention to details and just really all that you do to lead the city. We truly are blessed to have you and your leadership, so thank you. And Bobby, of course, thank you for keeping us out of trouble. We really are so fortunate to have your insights and support and knowledge of the laws that really help us make the right decision. And Billy, what do I say? You know, really, your passion and dedication and how you approach everything is with the highest integrity and is truly an asset to the city. I appreciate your experience and the thoughtfulness that you bring to every decision you make. I value your leadership and focus on development of all the employees. You empower them, and you really help advise us, which is a true talent. You know, the city is lucky to have you, and we are all lucky to have you. You know, really, you've helped me throughout my tenure and taught me so many leadership lessons and tools. You've given me so many tools, and I really do appreciate them because they've helped me to grow and will help me to grow professionally and personally in the future. And Bill, four years ago, you actually got me into running for city council. I asked how to make a difference, and you said, "Run for council." And really, over the last four years, I valued your commitment to every project, initiative, and action that you've taken to support our city. You work hard with your day job, but also provide the highest level of support, which many do not know your true level of commitment to our city. As mayor over the last two years, you have worked to create alignment, stretched us through our active committee assignments, you've driven decisions, consensus, and most importantly, listened to our citizens. You truly are the definition of servant leadership. And thank you to all my peers on council. Being on council is one of the most impactful roles that any elected official can have. Every decision has a direct impact on our neighbors, and I thank you all for your dedication and willingness to step up and lead. And as I step down and new council member steps up, as a River Green resident, I'm so grateful to have someone who is caring and as engaged as Dwayne Waterman. He is passionate and will represent my neighbors and friends, and I know that he'll have a lot to learn, but I'm confident and excited to see his energy and passion come to life and support our city. And finally, I have to say thank you to my support team, my family who has been with me and will continue to be with me going forward. You all challenged me and support me, and for that, I am grateful. As I step back from supporting Canton, I look forward to all the opportunities that we have to give you my full attention, love, and support. Thank you to Vicki and Samantha and Connor and Alice. When I started, there was just Samantha and Connor, who were four and seven. Now they're eight and 11. It's cliche to say, but they do grow up fast, and I admit I have not always prioritized them. But I look forward to being able to spend more time together. I know I take a lot on, and now I'm going to pull back and try to really focus on you guys and making lots of memories. So thank you, Canton, for giving me the opportunity to serve. I'm beyond blessed and grateful. I thank God every day for this opportunity. I'm very thankful to be part of the leaders behind me. I will always be a cheerleader because we are the coolest small town in America, and it's not by accident. It's because of the careful steps, planning, that each person here supports. So thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to say a few words. I've got to go back to work now.
Next, we have our guests and visitors' presentation of the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, State Recertification Award to the Canton Police Department. We welcome Mr. Charles Chuck Groover, Director of State Certifications. Welcome, Mr. Groover.
My name is Chuck Groover. I'm the coordinator for the state certification program for Georgia. My responsibility is to help agencies get state certified and also to keep their certification. And if you're familiar with what the police department has done here, this is not their first certification. This is probably almost 20 years worth. But after saying that, this is probably the most important certification, recertification they've had in the history of them being certified, because if you look around, just watch the news, you'll see how law enforcement is getting beaten up around the country. And to be honest with you, some of it's our own fault. Sometimes we're our own worst enemy, but the majority of it is not our fault. It's just a certain part of society that feels that way about law enforcement, while the majority of the citizens support law enforcement, but they're the quiet majority. So being certified is a very, very important part of being a police department. It's something, as the members of city council and the mayor and the city manager, you should be very, very proud of your department. I've heard some comments tonight about, you know, what a fine department you have. Well, there's no doubt about that. You know, whether or not you really understand why, what certification's about, the analogy that I like to use is, would you take your family to a hospital that didn't meet certain standards for health care? And the answer should be, no, I wouldn't. Would you take senior kids or grandkids, or would you go to a college or university that did meet certain standards for higher education? Again, the answer should be, no, I wouldn't do that. So if you take that same analogy and apply it to law enforcement, the big difference between the first two and law enforcement, the first two have to be certified, they have to meet those standards. And law enforcement is something they choose to do, it's totally voluntary, nobody's making them do it, they do it because they want to be the best they can be. And in doing so, that makes your job as the leaders of the community much better, much easier. If you're, and I'm not sure who your insurance is with, but if your insurance is through GMA, through the Georgia Municipal Association, because of them being certified, you get a 20% discount on your liability insurance, which could be a significant amount of money. So that's just one of the things, but when you think about it, we've got a certain set of standards, 141 standards in law enforcement for Georgia. They've met those standards, all that apply to them. They've trained their officers in accordance with those policies and procedures, and if the officers are then on the street following those policy procedures, the chances of a successful lawsuit against the city and the department is almost zero. That's not to say you can't get sued, because we all know you can be sued for anything, but the chance of a successful lawsuit because of them being certified is almost zero, so that should be a tremendous benefit for you as the leaders of the community. So it is my honor to represent the Georgia Association Chiefs of Police as the coordinator of the program to present to Canton Police Department their latest recertification plaque. Chief?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Even though the certification program is a department-wide effort, from the chief down to the newest rookie officer, to the newest civilian employee they have, there has to be one person in the department that kind of pulls it all together. One person that makes sure the policies are written properly, the documentation is all there, so when the assessors come in, they make sure that the department is doing what they claim they're doing. So that person is the certification manager, and we have a certificate of appreciation for Mark Gavala. Mark? One of the things I did when I first started in this position is I designed a special challenge coin. I know everybody's into challenge coins now. A special challenge coin that each agency gets two challenge coins. That's all they get, one for the chief, one for the certification manager. Even though I've had chiefs call me and say, "Can I buy some more for my staff or my mayor and council or whatever?" No, sir, you get two, that's all you get, that's why they're special. But on the other hand, I also made a wooden coin, almost like a poker chip, that is to promote the program. And what I did is I brought each one of y'all one of those coins that the chief is going to give you tonight. It's got the certification logo on the front of it. The back of the coin has what I consider the six major cornerstones of what certification's all about: professionalism, operational guidance, positive community support, transparency, ethical conduct, and liability protection. So if you think about those six things that I just mentioned, that should be hugely important to you as the leaders of the community, that you want your police department to adhere to. So with that, thank you very much for allowing me to come and present this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groover. Mark, thank you for your hard work. And chief, thank you and the entire department. I know the council, every member on the council appreciates the standards your department upholds every day of the year, 24/7, so we appreciate you guys, we're very proud of our police department, and you make us proud every day, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd also like to thank Director Groover for coming here. He is just taking over as the state director. Prior to this, they mailed you the plaque. When he came in, one of the things he wanted to do was, because it is such a, it really is a big deal, and three years of work by Mr. Gavala, he wanted to personally do this, and so he goes all over the state and does this. When I was telling him when Director Vic Reynolds took over the GBI, I saw him one day, and he said, "Wow, I didn't realize how big Georgia was until you started driving all over." So I'd like to thank him, that's got to be a tremendous effort for him to do that, and we are very proud of it. I know when we talk about Citizens Police Academy, state certification, one of the big questions we always get from the citizens is, "Isn't every police department state certified?" And unfortunately, in my opinion, the answer is no, they're not. So I think it's something we do, and, you know, the liability, the lawsuit, that's nice, but the big thing is, it is a way of showing that we are transparent and that we strive every day to be professional and be the best police department in the country. So with that, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. I believe it's also Mark's 18-year anniversary with the city. Is that correct? Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you, Mark. We have two informational items in the form of technical reports on upcoming...
We need to approve them.
Oh, yes, we do. Thank you. So we have in your packet the council meeting draft minutes from December 2nd. Any changes or revisions? Any motions?
To approve the minutes.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Now we have two informational items from Mr. Patton. These are for your information only, these are for two cases that will be coming before, so a public hearing in January, and we've moved these to informational items. I guess Mr. Green is going to present those tonight, so I should need to be looking up and not reading, so we're doing both. Thank you, Mr. Green, if you would present these two items to us.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Both of the items are, or have been submitted by the same person, Mr. Rob Beecham. The first one is a rezoning request and a master plan request. The property is 33.23 acres, and it's located between Dr. John T. Pettit, Cherokee, and Longview Streets. He is requesting to rezone the property from R-20 to PDR, which is Plan Development Residential, or the development of a residential subdivision. With his application, he's proposing to do some innovative development techniques, I call LID, Low-Impact Development. Some of you may or may not be familiar with it. I believe Ms. Watson has met with a couple of members and has gone over that briefly. I'm sure she'll have some comments in the follow-up staff report. The next item that Mr. Beecham has is a rezoning of .77 acres, and this property is located between West Marietta Street, Marietta Road, Railroad Street, and the West Marietta Connector. It takes a small city block of property, if you will. He's asking for that property to be rezoned from General Commercial to CBD, Central Business District. The Central Business District does not have any development criteria, it's traditionally been left up to staff's discretion as to what to approve for setbacks and lot sizes, and Mr. Patton and I have done that over the years based on adjacent and nearby properties, what they have in terms of setback, lot coverage, and such, to make it comparable in the neighborhood. On this .77 acres, Mr. Beecham is looking to put 10 single-family detached homes. Basically, that's it for the two, unless you may have some questions, or I'm sure you'll look forward to the next staff report where there's some more information in it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate it. Any announcements this evening? If not, we will move into our 10-minute public input. We have two residents signed up, Ms. Susan Stanton.
Glad I still have the right to be here for 10 minutes. I want to speak to regarding Chapter 286A about the citizens or your constituents' right to place an item on the agenda, or actually to request a placement of an item on the agenda. It seems to me anytime a government, and even small governments, are going to take away a right of their citizens, it needs to be given very deep thought, and there should be a compelling reason why this right is taken away. And there should be a compelling reason why this right is taken away. And in this case, I don't see either of those. The right to request, and notice it says "may request", it doesn't say "may place", it says "may request". And this request, and this opportunity isn't subversive or dangerous. And it isn't, as far as I know, been abused. It's simply a right for a resident to speak to council in a third way. When it says the citizen "may request", that means to me that you as council or the mayor or whoever has the opportunity to look at this and determine whether or not it's inappropriate for council's agenda. Or it might be a matter that can be resolved in another way. I mean, let's face it, we don't have a lot of audience participation in Canton. Most of the residents don't know anything about the city government or what their rights are. During my six years as city clerk and creating the agenda for council, to be approved, of course, by the mayor and the city manager, et cetera, et cetera, not once did I receive a request to place an item on the agenda that was inappropriate, never. It seems to me it's a little too proactive to eliminate your constituents' right to address an item on the agenda. I'm sorry, I'm thinking one thing in my mind and saying something else because there's so much to say. It just doesn't seem right that this right be eliminated without a good reason. It is not abused. It has never been abused. It is not open to abuse because it's "may request". There is no absolute right to have an item put on the agenda. I've heard that my ten-minute input is a good substitute for being able to place an item on the agenda, and that's just incorrect. There is no give and take on a ten-minute input. There's no discussion. There is very little acknowledgement. It's basically when I'm finished, thank you, next, and it's over. And the same is true with the idea of contacting seven different people with something that you think that a citizen may think is very important. And excuse me for saying this, but there's safety in numbers. And if there's an item that council just doesn't want to discuss, the chance of a resident finding a council member to agree with them is like asking them to hear a cry in the wilderness. Because if you don't want to do it, the seven of you can combine together and say no. But that doesn't mean it's not an important item to be discussed by the city. Councilman Estes, when he stood here, mentioned two times how important it is to listen to your constituents and to hear what the residents of this city have to say. That I agree, it's very important. So we have three ways of doing it. The agenda, we contact seven people, or we can do a ten-minute input. But if you're going to remove one of those rights, what's your good reason? Why is this important? What is the harm in leaving it there? There is no harm. I think of it this way. I think of it as the tan jacket in the back of my closet. Every couple of years, when you go through your closet, there's this jacket there. And you pull it out and you look at it and you say, I really don't wear this and I really don't need this. But it's shorter than the other tan jacket, or it's darker than my other tan jacket. So I'm going to keep it just in case. And you put it back in the closet. That's what this is to me, two-eighty, or two-eighty-six A is to me. It's a just-in-case. There is no other way to get to council. This is your third road. Why would you want to take that away from your residents? I haven't heard a good reason why. So I ask you to consider this one more time. There aren't that many ways to address council. And this being able to request that an item be placed on the agenda is one of three ways we have. Why on earth would you take it away for no compelling reason? And that's it. Thank you for being here. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Next, we have Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Thomas Weaver, I reside at one-thirty-one Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. And as many of you recall, two weeks ago to the day, I stood here at the Deus and I told you that I didn't want to be the Grinch that was trying to steal Christmas. Indeed, it wasn't my intent to be sent home with only a lump of coal. But I too, similar to what Ms. Stanton has already shared with you, I shared with grave trepidation the idea of removing Section two-eighty-six A from our Code of Ordinances. And I asked you to please consider remanding that idea back to the Ordnance Review Committee for reconsideration. During that time, I had heard from others who had shared with me competing ideas that caused me to rethink why the Ordnance Review Committee placed the recommendations that it did under the advice of council to the mayor and council for consideration on first reading two weeks ago. And I suppose it was at the time that I was, I was hoping that council would give me one heck of a Christmas gift and send it back and give it a second look. And alas, I stood here with every ounce of my bean and I was asking for a Christmas miracle that maybe, just maybe somehow, that provision could be salvaged. Maybe there was at least one person on council who would suffer me and enfranchise me with the ability to retain that power that I currently have under the Code of Ordinances as it exists in its current rendition on file with our clerk today. And now, here we are, two weeks later. The ordinance is scheduled for second reading and review. And if approved by council on consent, two-eighty-six A would be vanquished and would be relegated to many Christmas, to a Christmas past many Christmases long ago. And it was my hope that that would not be the case. So for all the reasons why, I understand why. And again, I don't want to be redundant, but I was, I had the opportunity to speak and share my thoughts and ideas with others and they too with me. And suppose, suppose it to be so that the will of council will be the will of council. But I suppose that the most special and precious Christmas gift of them all, one that I was too short-sighted to see two weeks ago is, regardless if it's a misstatement or if it's an honest disagreement where others just don't see eye to eye, whether it's on this issue or so many another, too many to mention. I suppose that the most special Christmas gift of all that all of us in this sacred chamber share with each other is that we can agree to disagree and at the end, we're all still friends, okay? And that's what makes this place special. And that's what makes Christmas merry and bright. It's the best gift that anyone can ask for because there are certain places where you cannot do that. This is one of the places where you can. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me to speak. And please know that I ask an approbation of what Ms. Stanton has shared. If there's a voice one on council that can just summon the courage to ask the question, do we really need to rescind this to the deathbed? I ask that that voice please speak up prior to just a compulsory robotic yea vah to forward it to marrow or ratification in its present form. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. We have several items on the consent agenda this evening. As usual, I will read these items. If anyone would like these, any of these items removed for further discussion, we will do so. Item A, approval of the twenty-twenty-two council meeting calendar dates. Item B, approval of resolution to adopt the Cherokee County Hazard Mitigation Plan, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-six. Item C, approval of fines, fees, and bond schedule. Item D, approval of information exchange agreement with Cherokee County Development Department. Item E, approval of ordinance amendments to Chapter Two, Administration. Item F, approval of ordinance amendments to Chapter Six, Alcoholic Beverages. And item G, approval of ordinance amendments to Chapter Ten, Amusements and Entertainments. Would anyone like any items removed for further discussion?
I would like, I would like to ask a question.
Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Addressing Ms. Stanton and Mr. Weaver's comments on Chapter Two. Mr. Dyer, in order for a citizen, if this is changed, in order for a citizen to place an item on the agenda, they do not have to have the approval of all seven members. Is that correct?
Ms. Stanton has raised a pretty good point about whether that's mandatory that it go on the agenda. And I believe the practice has been that if somebody requested, it went on automatically without anybody's approval. If it's truly just a request that can be denied, they still, a citizen still has that ability. They could ask that somebody put it on the agenda. They could ask the mayor. They could ask council members. So I think that we've all operated on it being mandatory where nobody on council had to give consent to it. Maybe I'm not aware of all the requests that come in, but it does say "may request", but it says to, in order to be considered, which I read to say be considered at a city council meeting. So, you know, there may be some ambiguity there. But I do think the point is if it's not required to put on the agenda, that right still exists. You can just ask for it to be put on the agenda.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Ms. Wilson, would you like that item removed for further discussion or does that answer your question?
No, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Move into old business. Old business item A and old business item B was tabled. So we'll move to old business item C, discussion and possible action on the City of Canton Housing Needs Assessment and Market Study Update by Thomas P. Miller and Associates. Mr. Patton, welcome.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members. City of Canton did complete the Housing Needs Assessment Market Study. City council did adopt that document. When that document did come before city council for discussion and adoption, it was, part of the discussion was that the city would look at an amendment and an update to the Housing Needs Assessment Market Study based upon the U.S. Census twenty-twenty population data as well as what has been approved by the city since the consulting firm did the original work. The U.S. twenty-twenty census data, the total population numbers are available. I think a lot of the demographics are also available as well in discussions with the city manager. We did reach out to Thomas P. Miller and Associates, the firm that did the original Housing Needs Assessment, requested a proposal from them to do an update based upon new development and the population numbers. And they did submit a proposal, and the proposal for that work is fifteen thousand dollars. I'm here to answer any questions any of you might have in regards to the proposal.
Ms. Estes?
Less about the proposal. I agree that it'd be great to get an update with the latest census information. Is there a formal, would the, a motion for action be to have the mayor sign the agreement? Or is it even, what's the scope of what's being requested?
If city council approves the proposal, we would reach out to them for a contract, if you will. Part of the motion could be to approve the proposal, the dollar amount, and authorize the mayor to sign a contract once it's reviewed by the attorney and we can move forward.
Further questions, comments? Ms. Estes?
Then I'll make a motion to approve the proposal in the amount of fifteen thousand and authorize the mayor to sign it after the city manager, the city attorney reviews it.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. I'm going to back up one more time this evening. I guess I'm in a rush to end the last meeting here. But I know that item B of old business had the two items that were tabled. But item A is still on the agenda. Discussion and possible action on Case Z-two-one-zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-four for Jones and Clouds, Inc., requesting rezon, rezone property from RA-six residential detached, six units per acre, to GC, General Commercial, for an expansion of Cloud Supply Company. Mr. Green?
Mayor, members of council, this is a request to rezone one-point-seven-two acres from RA-six to GC, General Commercial. It's, Cloud Supply is the applicant. They are requesting the General Commercial zoning to expand their landscape business, the landscape supply. At the November fourth public hearing, the site plan that was presented by the applicant was minimal at best. And after the meeting, it was asked that they submit an enhanced or embellished site plan to be heard during the action meeting that was going to be taking place on November the eighteenth. The applicant informed us that they would not have the time enough left between the two meetings to supply a better site plan, for lack of a better term, for you. They still have not submitted that. So this is the action meeting for them. You may want to table their request until it has been prepared. Of course, that is up to you to make that decision. If you want to go forward with the action meeting tonight, we do have a list of possible items for consideration based on what they have submitted initially.
Okay. Mr. Carl?
As the applicant indicated, that they will get a site plan and any kind of timeline for that?
In speaking with Mr. Chambers, who was the attorney or is the attorney for the applicant, he is still trying to get that done. He has expressed some trepidation that he may have to do it himself.
Good luck. I don't have a problem tabling it. They may need more time for it. They're going to get it in, but certainly that won't continue indefinitely.
Can we consider postponing it indefinitely until we have a site plan? And not keep setting dates and not meeting them, or?
No, there, you, you have a certain timeframe by which you have to take action.
Right, okay. Ninety days? Okay, so we could table it for sixty days or total?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to table for sixty days?
Second.
A motion to table for sixty days and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Green. Sure I didn't forget anything. Item D, discussion and possible action to approve retirement plan documents. Mr. Ingram?
Good evening, Mayor and council. You have before you an adoption agreement for the defined contribution plan as well as an ordinance for the soft closing of a defined benefit plan. This is a long time in the making. You know, we've discussed this a number of times. And if council, in providing due diligence, if you have any questions, comments? If not, I would ask to entertain a motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any questions, comments, discussion? Ms. Estes?
Thank you. I'd make a motion to approve and direct the mayor to sign the DC adoption agreement with Mission Square and to approve the ordinance for a soft close of the defined benefit plan with GMA to new entrants and make those both effective January first, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Carl?
I'll just note that, I know that we've talked about this a whole lot. We've had a good conversation. We had a special set meeting where we walked through everything, talked with staff, Mr. Ingram, and also looked at it. Just appreciate all the diligence everybody appears put in to come to those meetings and to. everybody appears put in to come to those meetings and to, to get this moving forward and make sure it's right for everybody. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. I second that too, because I know it's something we've been wanting to address for a long time. And it's something in reviewing the, the old plans is something that had needed to be, needed to be addressed. So thanks to everyone for the hard work, especially you, Mr. Ingram. Any further questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Item E, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Providing for the Sealed Bids and Administrative Process for Issuing Distilled Package Licenses. Mr. Peppers?
That's a mouthful.
It is.
Ultimately, this is a resolution that approves staff moving forward with sealed bids for the distilled package licenses. And then there's an exhibit that outlines the administrative process that we discussed at the last. I have any answer, any questions you might have?
Any questions or discussions? Ms. Brooks? Sorry.
I move to approve the resolution for administrative process on distilled spirit package licensing and to authorize the mayor to sign such resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion, question? Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Peppers, are you still having the public meeting to go over the requirements and all?
Yes, that's part of the process. It's outlined on here that that meeting will occur. Give me one second to get to it. On January the 14th at 10:00 a.m. in this very room. And we will make sure we get all of that information noticed with the process starting tomorrow.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that on verbal and video, public record.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Ms. Schmidt made the motion and Mr. Carlin seconded. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. We added Item F regarding Case MPA 2109-002 for Master Plan Amendment for TPA Group LLC on the north side of Water Miss Drive and west side of Bus Parkway. Mr. Peppers?
I've put a piece of paper at your seat, but in speaking with each of you individually and also looking back at the, the minutes and also talking to the applicant, it seemed like there was some confusion as to whether or not when the applicant was allowed to withdraw their conditional use permit on that case without prejudice if council's intent was also for them to be able to not have prejudice on the master plan amendment. And in individually speaking with you all, it sounded like that was what the intent of council was, but that's not actually what the vote was. So what I would suggest to council is to clarify that, that council make a motion to waive the 12-month waiting period before a new master plan amendment application can be submitted on the property related to the case MPA 2109-002.
Thank you, Ms. Peppers. Ms. Schmidt?
I made the motion last time, so I'm going to try again. I moved to waive the 12-month waiting period before a new master plan amendment application may be submitted related to property of case MPA 2109-002.
I think I had the second last time. I'll take the second on this one as well.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Thank you. We have Item G that was added to the agenda, and that is to accept the donation of 1.3287 acres from Mr. Bill Kent.
That's correct. The property is... Oh, it is new business. I'm sorry. We had that discussion in executive session, so this will be a new business item.
Okay.
It'll be the second new business item.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. Okay, so we'll move into new business now. So, Item A, Discussion of Request for Proposals, RFP for Advanced Meeting Infrastructure, AMI Services. Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, thank you again, Mayor, Council. Back in May of 2021, we issued a request for qualifications for professional services for an AMI system. We received nine proposals from firms. We convened a review committee. What we wanted to do was narrow that down to about four or five qualified firms that could then answer RFP and provide cost proposals and a proposal to implement that AMI system. So when we convened the committee and we narrowed it down to five firms, we interviewed those five firms. And then in August, we issued a request for proposals for those five firms to present to the city a cost proposal. You have in front of you a summary of those cost proposals. This is a significant project. It's a significant sustainability project for the City of Canton. To have an AMI system available to us, leaks can be detected quicker. Right now, sometimes leaks go 30 to 45 days without being found. We'll be able to see leaks virtually immediately. We'll be able to provide better customer service. When customers sign in or sign out of an account, we need a read to sign in or sign out that customer. We'll be able to get that read immediately versus, you know, having a technician go out and obtain that reading manually. Furthermore, a little bit down the road, once the actual infrastructure is implemented, customers will have a dashboard that they can go to so that they can print off and see their consumptions real time, so that they can assess where their water is being used. It'll help efficiencies. So this is a great sustainability project, and this is the council's first reading, so we're not asking for action tonight. I really wish Mr. Estes could be in your field to take action, but we're not asking action tonight. What we propose, if council's willing, we propose to hopefully bring back a contract because these five firms have not learned of our recommendation to council until this agenda. We propose that we'll bring back a con, a contract for council's consideration at the January 6th meeting, but considering the holidays and New Years, you know, forgive us if it happens to be on January the 20th. We'll try to come back as quickly as possible. But if council, mayor council has any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to answer those. This, the cost proposal from Delta Municipal, which is our current vendor, came back at $1.2 million. That's almost half of what the next vendor was. And, you know, I love it when I have the opportunity to say we budgeted $4 million on this project. Quite honestly, quite bluntly, I thought the costs were going to come back higher. I do want to give some backpats to our staff, because back about six or seven years ago, and I can recall this happening, staff coming together, especially the utility billing department with Ms. Wanda Floyd, Ms. Forster, the finance director, coming together and talking about when, when we wanted to make a move to the new meters, to the best technology meters. We knew that this day was coming. And so we made a decision at that time and said, let's start putting in the ground these new R900 meters. And I think you're seeing in front of you at $1.2 million, the product of that decision at that time. So I want to, you know, pat the staff on the back saying, I think that was a great move, you know, for the city, that, you know, we're seeing the fruits of those labors right now.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Schmidt?
All, these systems are all the same? They all do the same thing?
No, ma'am.
What is the massive cost difference account for?
The two highest ones, and, and we kind of knew this after doing the interviews, and those two are complete renovation. They're removing the old meters, installing new meters. Now, going into the, the final cost proposal stage, we had a feeling that our current vendor, Delta Municipal, with the Neptun meters, was probably going to be the cheapest, because they already have about 75, we, as of now, we've got about 75% of the new high-tech meters in the ground. So we knew there was going to be a advantage, if you will, to that vendor. But there's two of those other vendors that all their, all they were changing is the registers. And I don't want to get into too far details, but all they're changing is the registers, the electronics on top of the meter. So we had believed that they would come back very competitive, not as competitive as we thought. And so now Delta, again, our current vendor, has come to us and saying, you've already had the infrastructure in the ground, the vast majority of it. All we need to do is, I'm oversimplifying this, but all we need to do is install some collector towers, about a half a dozen collectors through the, throughout the city. And, you know, we're 90% there. And then again, later on down the road, with the technology, with the dashboard behind the scenes, we can implement that and, and customers will be able to pull up information at any time, you know, and, and do a lot of servicing of their own accounts.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Ingram. We appreciate the great news.
Thank you.
It's a great, great Christmas present for us. So, thank you. Mr. Peppers?
In working on the property over at Harmon Park and some of the park improvements over there, Atkins brought back a survey to us that had a discrepancy between the tax maps and the actual deeds. And in sitting down with the adjacent property owner, Mr. Bill Kent, with Kent and Kent LLC, Mr. Kent has offered to donate property to the city, 1.3287 acres, that's basically the center line of the Canton Creek, next to his shopping center over to Harmon Park. And so what I have put before you is a draft of a letter thanking him for his donation, a copy of the deed of gift, and a copy of the survey. Council would just need to accept the donation. He'll fill out the paperwork associated with that, but he would like to get, get this closed before the end of the calendar year for tax purposes. And so what we're asking tonight would be for council to accept the donation of the acreage from Mr. Kent.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate Mr. Kent's generosity and, again, another gift for us tonight. So, do we have any questions, comments, or a motion? Ms. McGrew?
I truly appreciate Mr. Kent's donation, and I make a motion that we accept it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. Mr. Peppers, your report, please.
Mr. Tolan had asked at the last meeting for an update on code compliance and our efforts with that. Earlier this week, we had an ordinance committee meeting where we went over a couple of specific issues. Merrick McClure had some things that he brought to my attention that are potential conflicts between what we want to do as a city and what our codes specifically say. So, for example, one of the things we talked about was having some language in code enforcement as it relates to not only tall vegetation or grass, but also overgrown bushes that are blocking signs, or overgrown bushes that are blocking windows, or trees that are touching roof lines that could become an issue. And that's not currently covered in sections of the International Property Maintenance Code. And our current code specifically just talks about vegetation in the form of grass. And so one of the things that the ordinance committee will be looking at is an improvement to that. I think what we will do, though, is we will move forward in January as we send out business license renewal information in making sure that we let the commercial properties know specifically which code areas we're going to be aggressively watching for the coming year, those that we had identified. Those specific things included exterior property areas, including landscape mulching, parking striping, ADA signage and lighting, rubbish and garbage on sites, signs, mold mildew, sign lighting, paint, unauthorized signs, exterior structures, including building paint, mold, handrails, sidewalks, and driveways, and also window signage. Window signage is one that we're also going to have to fix as part of the UDC. That's overall signage, and I know that's one of the sections that we still have to go through with that particular area. But we will go ahead and notify those businesses and commercial properties of those specific issues. Additionally, we will also put our list together on the residential side. And while we will work on a social media campaign, an email campaign, things on our website, we'll also have that information in both English and Spanish for new account holders that come into the city on the utility side. And we'll be looking at a way to get that information into all of our account holders citywide as we come into January. But there are going to be a couple of things that we're going to have to correct in codes. And so that's working right now through those two committees, UDC and also the Ordinance Review Committee.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Peppers, just to kind of clarify and dig a little bit deeper, we had talked as a committee and before council about, about a program whereby either landlords or owner occupant, if they have issues at their residence on the exterior of the property that need mitigation, somehow coming up with a program whereby the city would offer something to be determined to help, to help rectify whatever issues exist. Is that something that you guys internally at the staff level are still working on, or where are we with that?
It is. That was one of the potential buckets that we were looking at with that housing trust fund, specifically looking at how we could take some funds out of ARPA and put those into areas of blight. Not so much on the landlord side, but more on the residential side. If I live in the structure, I don't have the financial wherewithal to make some of the improvements, utilizing a program similar to what was done in the city with CDVG funds back in the 80s, where there's loans that are made to make those improvements to the property, and they might be forgivable loans over a period of time if the homeowner is, remains in the property and doesn't have future code violations or what have you. That's something that is going in the housing trust fund. And while we may be working on rules, that's really going to be a part of the job description for that housing residential services manager. I think, though, if we can focus the first quarter of the year on getting the information out about those particular items, those five or six items on the residential and the commercial side that are the most important, before we get into the spring and we start getting into overgrowth of, of vegetation, that'll give us an opportunity to provide the educational side of what it is that the city is expecting, so that we can start the enforcement side after the, those two code areas have been fixed.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And that's all I have, unless you have any particular questions about any items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no council introduced items. Just checking, I'm checking. I've got a few things for my report. We didn't add it to the agenda because we needed to wait or vote for the retirement plan updates to be approved. But we did agree to amend the city manager's contract if we did update the retirement plan in the future. You guys received those recommended amendments that Mr. Dyer prepared via email, and we just need to consider those and would need to consider a motion to amend the employment agreement between the city manager and the city to reflect the new retirement plan updates. Any questions or comments?
Is this a new item, or are you just letting us know you want to do this for next meeting?
It needs to be done before the end of the year. And I didn't add it before because we didn't have, I didn't, I wanted to make sure that it's going to be approved, because I didn't want to add it. If it wasn't approved, we wouldn't have added it.
So we need to amend an agenda to add this to, as a new business item?
Yes.
I'll start with that.
Okay.
Move to...
Thank you.
To add the consideration of revision of the city manager's contract in light of the approval of the retirement program. Second.
So the motion and a second, add it to the agenda. Further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Members voted for the motion. Now we'll consider the, the item, the motion to amend the employment agreement between the city manager and the city to reflect the new retirement plan update.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you guys for taking care of that business here. We discussed at the last meeting boards and commissions, uh, appointments, and, and some of you have sent a few. We've also have sent out a, a letter, uh, Mr. Peppers did, to all members of boards and commissions, uh, just asking them, um, if they plan or want to continue, uh, uh, serving on those boards, um, with giving them a deadline of December twenty-second. So for the majority of the boards, I recommend that we wait until our first meeting in, in Ju- uh, January to, um, to look at those, because we may have more openings if some of those people choose to, to step down. But we do have a few that, uh, we do need to address, um, and beginning with the Canton Housing Authority, um, which, uh, I had, uh, mentioned last, um, meeting, my intention to nominate Tiffany Byrd to the Canton Housing Authority Board, and I would like to officially nominate Tiffany Byrd to the Canton Housing Authority Board tonight.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Next, the sustainability board. We had, uh, Mr. Estes who, uh, was completing his term and didn't make an appointment, uh, but he's gotten with Mr. Waterman, and they've, um, made an appointment, Mr. Waterman's made an appointment of Mr. Richard Abbott, uh, for the sustainability board. And so we would like to go ahead and approve him tonight so he can get to work to that great board, so. All in favor of appointing Mr. Richard Abbott to the sustainability board, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. And for the downtown development authority, we're gonna have at least three openings, uh, possibly more. But we do have an active project, uh, um, with the downtown development authority. And, uh, for those three openings, uh, you know, I'd like to nominate, uh, Cindy Brooks was a novice. She was serving one term, remainder of term that Rob Drake was serving, um, and would like to serve again. She's an, an active member of the DDA. I'd like to nominate Corey Schubert, uh, one of the owners of Downtown Kitchen, and Mr. Penhob Hodge, developer of the mill on the Etowah. And again, we may have more appointments in the future, uh, but we know we will have three appointments, uh, there, um, and, um, for your consideration.
Second. Are we doing that? We didn't do it last time.
Well, and we can wait to the next meeting if you guys want to. We do have an active project going on, and so we will have those openings, um, you know, coming up at the end of December, um, so.
As a s- the sitting member of the DDA, I'd like to make those appointments tonight. And so I move that we approve the mayor's appointments to the DDA.
Great, I believe we had a second over there.
I sit over here, I'm a husband. The kids' table.
As you're last night at the kids' table, so. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motions. And, uh, last but not least, it's our last meeting of the year, and I, I really want to wish all of our residents a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays, whatever you choose to celebrate, however you choose to celebrate. Uh, I hope your two thousand twenty-two is filled with health, happiness and prosperity for you and your loved ones. Also, I want to take this opportunity to thank my fellow council members for a great year, your hard work. We've accomplished a lot. I'm so proud of this council and what we're accomplishing. We got a lot more to do, uh, next year, and I'm, uh, have a total confidence that we'll accomplish even more next year. I want to thank our city manager, our assistant city manager, and our entire team, our staff, for their hard work. Uh, we, we every day, uh, we ask more and more of them, and they step up and deliver more and more, and we really appreciate it. I'm sure we're not the easiest council to work with, uh, but, uh, you guys deliver and, and we appreciate that. And, but we're just getting started, uh, and, uh, you know, next year will be a great year, uh, in Canton, and we'll continue to create the coolest, uh, small town in America. So with that, um, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. We are adjourned.